All we need to order and so we don't have the way you have.
I'm looking at.
And to the Republic, for each hand, one nation, two. In this world with liberty and community trust.
Okay, we look over. Elder and Social Services Director.
So first for the for the board and also for the committee would like to introduce. Tanya. Paparazzo. She is. Going to be our new Director of Elders and Social Services. And at least with confirmation of appointment from from the board. So first thought that we could have time to introduce yourself. Sort of describe a little bit of some of her background if you had any questions.
Are you all right?
Yep.
I'm time to cover up that is to me you all. I'm a life as clinical social worker who specialize in aging. So specifically went to school to work with the elder population. My graduate grad school of study, my career in New York and Southern Connecticut. And so I made my way back home here. In central Bass, I'm happy to be back here and put some roots down and really be able to be part of a community and help. And I'm very excited about this opportunity and being, you know, able to jump in and get things going and meet with everyone and see, you know, what the needs are, what's working, what's not. And really get to know everyone, so.
Um, I see. Do you have a lot of private practices? Will you continue with that or?
There's going to be a transition, so I've moved the people that are not ready to return to, we're doing some Saturday morning sessions. And until I feel that they're okay to either end of you refer that to some other people. I do, I do work with clients that have dementia, so obviously there's more of that state with referring them out, but they've all agreed to do weekend spots, at least for the time being, so.
Did you just move back?
No, I moved, gosh. We built a housing raft in in two thousand seventeen.
Five, six years now?
Yeah.
Wyatt, what attracted you to Upton in this position specifically?
I think in in general, just the idea of being part of a smaller community and a community that's close to home was nice. I've been involved with Braft in in both like the fundraising capacity and with the director there to to start some initiatives, but. The idea of being able to really take hold and and help the community in general was nice. We come to Upton a lot, you know, we're literally 10 minutes down the road, and so we've been involved in the community, some events in the library, and we visit the playground. Right behind the community center, so it felt like a real good fit.
No, this is great. I'm very excited to get to know you and work with you and and have you helping the helping the community out, so thanks.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Any other questions? I'll take a motion. And he's roll to it.
There you go.
They're official, they're written down. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to section four A I of the Town Manager Act to approve the town manager's proposed appointment of Tanya Paparazzo as Director of Elder and Social Services.
I second the motion.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye unanimous action, welcome aboard. Congratulations.
Thank you. So we'll see time later on in the month. She will be stopping by next week, we have a COA meeting, so.
Oh, nice.
Set up to to meet someone. Officially starting.
That's nice.
Very good stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Now, is she gonna be here?
He's gonna be here at the end of the meeting for the executive session, and so he's currently at a meeting, so I'm gonna handle.
Okay.
The next two items along with with that.
Very good. And that'll be police officer appointment.
Yes, so similarly, the fire, uh, police chief, as well as HR and a member from personnel had done interviews and we went through and. The chief is recommending for appointment and presenting Cameron Byrne for consent on appointment as a police officer. He will be joining us later on during the year after he goes through.
Absolutely. You should say that.
Yes.
After the academy.
Yes, that as an officer while he's in the academy, be officially.
Be a official. Questions?
No, it's great.
No questions, I'll throw, take a motion.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to section four A one of the Town Manager Act. To approve the town manager's proposed appointment of Cameron Byrne as a police officer within the Upton Police Department.
I second it. All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous action. We have the acceptance of Upton Men's Club donation.
So um, the Upton Men's Club has been very generous in donating twenty five hundred dollars to the police department to. Support a wellness program basically to allow for screening for public safety personnel for. This is a program that the chief had been looking at bringing on board. We did receive a wellness grant to sort of partially fund and with the men's club assistance. They're able to sort of help fully fund this program and make sure that. Public safety personnel can be safe and make sure that. We're we're always concerned about their welfare, not only the community and the role, but also the impacts that it may have on their. Did you want to say something about this?
I'm waiting, so what's interesting about this? I think a few of you were living in town when the club was first created by a gentleman named Bill McQuillmick. Brit Benako and myself in the church basement, and our first gift to the community was when Chief Stockwell was here and we were at the restaurant. Is down the Duncan Donuts upstairs and Chief Stockwell came and said that they needed a standing radar unit, which is still used by the community. And in the twenty six and a half years that the club has been in existence, it's been. It's been prideful of the members to be able to donate and to serve the community that we reside with it. Just to regress a second, you know, I'm an attorney, some of you know, and I initially was an assistant day in Norfolk County, and at that time I thought the two best. Towns were Stoughton and Brookline as far as their police force. And getting to know Chief Stockwell and now, of course, Chief Bradley, I include Upton in that the members are professional. I've had criminal matters against them, you know, and they're very, very professional, we're very happy to support. And we're also looking forward to trying to assist the town in updating. The message board, which the members might know was donated by the town, and I do feel sad in that. It doesn't seem that the letters or the words are put out on it anymore, I think they still exist. Just maybe nobody's been delegated that responsibility to keep the community aware of events that are happening, but in talking with Joe. I guess he's gonna try and determine what the wiring would be. You have the the hardware meeting, the sign itself, and the club hopefully can assist in that. We do have funds, I'm not allowed to commit them all by myself, but the purpose of the club was to whatever we raised to give back to the community. And I just want to say, I think we're the few organizations that one hundred percent of money that we have raised is always gone back to the community. None of it is used for the benefit of the members. The members pay a dues every year, and that's what the members use if they have a party or something like that. So we're very fortunate, we have, I think, fifty something plus guys in the club this year. And again, we look forward to helping the community in any way that we can.
Thank you so much. Always been amazing.
I don't have to say you're welcome because honestly, it's our community too, so we're really serving our community, our families and our neighbors, so. I know that Brett is a member like myself, and I was just like, he's kind of removed himself, so there won't be any conflict, which I did too, but we look forward to Brett. When he feels that his time has been served enough to come back into the club and to assist the club, so.
So wait.
Well, thank you.
I will take a.
Let us know again, I'm sure Joe will follow up with myself and let us know what monetarily we can do, and maybe we can make it an event and help the town in a big way.
Appreciate it.
All right, have a good day.
Thanks.
All right.
Thank you for coming.
Take care.
You too. I move the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General Laws, chapter forty four subsection fifty three A. To accept a donation to the Upton Police Department from the Upton Men's Club in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars to be used towards the implementation. Of the Sigma Tactical Wellness Program.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous action. And we have town of Upton sign, Upton Men's Club request for beautification funds and. I see that they sent a call again.
Yes. So um, Men's Club had, you know, as as everyone knows. They really provide an excellent welcome to the town. There, I don't really know of towns that really decorate their entrances on a continual basis. They may put up a sign and then assume that that is gonna last for decades, and that's the extent. And even prior to joining Upton, I always thought that was unique as I was getting to Metro West. Always noticing that, so one of our entry points on Westboro Road, that sign went missing. We have no idea what happened, but it's not there.
It's not a small.
So in order to replace it, Men's Club is requesting. Thirty three hundred and five dollars for the purchase and installation of a replacement welcome to Upton's.
Questions, comments? I think they, as you said, Joe, they truly are in the signs of Upton, and I think we should replace that. I really had a hard time believing somebody stole it, it's not small, but hey, things happen. It didn't throw legs. True, true.
Most of the people that would watch the board meetings on a recording know that the beautification fund is not taxpayer money.
Right, yes.
But I feel compelled to share that.
Yes.
Anyway, this is not taxpayer money, this is money that was provided from the Nolan Merschene family. As part of several trusts that they've agreed to the town, so, you know, it's always to take advantage of the generosity of.
Yes.
Folks in the town. And and just sort of continue that legacy and that partnership with the men's club, like I think it's just a great, it's a great story and one of the things that makes Upton so special, so. The privilege. I move that the board vote to approve the Upton Men's Club request for up to three thousand three hundred and five dollars for the purchase and installation of a replacement. Welcome to Upton sign on Westboro Road to be paid out of the town's beautification trust.
I second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous action. Licensing. Twenty twenty four annual license renewal of Precision Auto. It's an update on.
Sure, um, so and and also I'd like to get some. Assistance from Lauren Bassett's Port House because to resolve some of the issues that Precision Auto has been really a team effort. Many of the issues have to do with the repair business and missions and everything from. The equipment, the stack that then releases the. The gases to DEP permitting to local permitting, the thing for the building to comply and the operation to comply with. Local fire code as well as building code and also the fact that some of these. The permitting that is in place isn't only the operator of Precision Auto, there's responsibility of the property as well. You know, through the inspection process, talking with staff, the operator of Precision Auto absolutely wants to try to get things resolved, this is their livelihood. And part of it, though, is gonna take some time because it also requires from the property. To do those things, and those are are permits and permanent processes that have their own enforcement abilities. DEP is able to enforce a guessing, these processes take a while to navigate. So I don't know if you want to add anything.
So we went in, a resident complained, they complained to the Board of Health Fire Department, DDP and EPA. And we went in and did an initial inspection and we found.
So what were the complaints about?
The complaints were about fumes, odors, working in the parking lot, dust, I mean, all sorts of things, so.
Yeah.
What brought us in really was the neighbor saying, I have this overwhelming stench of ink fumes. And they're working in the parking lot and, you know, none of it, he sent video and everything, so we went MS. To EPA kick it back down to MS DEP, so we went in and inspected and we found off a host of major issues. He was written up, you know, three, four, five pages by DEP specific. I have to say with full credit to the operator of the business, he has done just about everything he can. But some of the major issues are the stack, the stack is what takes all the fumes out of the paint booth. And it's supposed to come straight up and go ten feet over the roof. It barely cleans, clears the roof and it goosenecks down to the ground, which means all of the toxic chemicals, fumes and everything else are at people level on the ground. It is, as he said, it's, he's getting estimates, but it's potentially thousands and thousands of dollars to repair. We went back in, we re-inspected, he did an amazing job, he, his hazardous wastes are now stored properly, it's cleaner, there are a few. We need some fresh air exchanges, we need both the furnace stack, but more importantly, the big one is the paint stack because that's what's. Putting the fumes and the toxic chemicals into the neighborhood. He is reaching out, he is gonna get some estimates, his understanding is the owner is out of the country. DEP is going to write a compliance letter to the owner and the operator. And we're gonna move forward from there, and like DEP says, we'd like to get this resolved before windows open. You know, right now, it's not, you may smell it if you're driving by, but, you know, people aren't necessarily have the windows open, and it's. It is the neighborhood, it's our commercial business and a residential neighborhood. So where we've left it is DEP is writing letters, Pat Roach from Code saw some issues he'd like addressed. So. But this is the class two license just for the sale of vehicles, correct?
So um.
If I may, of course Ted Briggs is on the Board of Health with me, and Board of Health is aware of this, and Ted has said the class two is not necessarily to sell cars. What he repairs cars, so in the process of repairing cars, and if you bring your truck in and you need a new front end. He might need to go to the auction and buy a truck and swap your front ends up. That's what the class two is for, is my understanding, although it's not worked that way, it is a strict class two to buy and sell. And repair, buying, selling for. Secondhand motor vehicles. Right. And a lot of the retail turns out, yeah, I couldn't say anything.
So to go to some of these auction places, you need to have a class two.
Right.
So you sort of need both, the license allows for the sale, but then he also needs that to do some of this stuff, so. As far as purchase and then repair, all I got is either selling some additional cars or preparing to then that vehicle that he bought to get the front end.
Yeah, correct.
So um, but because these issues are. That we still have to do address are really specifically for characters and stand there is enforcement capabilities that both. DEP as well as Code are able to place. Our vote back on January sixteenth was to link the approval of the license to also full sign offs from building, Board of Health, Fire. Knowing that these things are in motion. I feel very comfortable in recommending elimination of that, those those votes to allow for that class two license to. Allow for it to have some means of getting revenue to them, because he has to be able to fund.
Right.
The work. It's still, we still have enforceable capabilities through the Board of Health, through Code Enforcement Department. And ultimately DEP, now that they're engaged, that's gonna be the ultimate. For enforcement here on those missions, so. For any of these businesses, there's obvious conditions associated with, say, zoning work, appeals per maximum. Able to achieve, that can be for same thing with code issues that then. Pack and enforcement and actually go to court to enforce, but I think we're at a point that approval won't interfere with enforcement, that it could. Basically act as goodwill for that enforcement, because now we know exactly what needs to be done, and now it's like a time issue and then dealing with the problem.
How does zoning have a limit of how many vehicles you can have on the property?
My understanding, there is a maximum out there on the vehicle, on on the premises, both in as far as for sale as that, as well as a maximum. I don't recall off the top of my head what Michael said the status of that was during.
I have to say, we were, I was at the inspection and I was extremely pleased. I mean, he did a three sixty, he did just about everything that was in his power, including decreasing the number of vehicles now. Four or five of us there, there are some employees there, but he was, I think he was within the limits or darn close to it, as opposed to the first time when he probably had. At least ten times the amount of vehicles he should, um, so. My feeling is this operator, this license holder really has worked extremely hard to comply. So you feel comfortable. I feel comfortable, yes, because I I know DEP has offered to work with him to help get the stack issue resolved. If in six or eight months the stack issue is not resolved, I would feel differently, but DEP has offered to step in and say, we will help you get what needs to be done done. So I was pleased, yes.
I do not have any questions or any action, we do have again raised with Linda Gay.
Linda Gay? Are you on? She, she muted.
She, could she do that on purpose? Uh, no, she should be out speaking.
Linda? Six or eight months.
Maybe just make sure that the sound is actually helping. Yes.
She hit it by accident?
So that at least. Sorry, I just turned on my my mic to see if.
Right.
Took her her hand down.
I should be, okay. I would entertain a motion then to.
Move that the board vote to approve the twenty twenty four class two license renewal application for Precision Auto Center.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous action. We have the one day liquor license for Blackstone Valley Vocational School District. This is something that they do every year.
Exactly.
So. Questions, no questions? I see, I'm going to take a motion to. I move that the select board vote to approve the applications submitted by Michael F Fitzpatrick. With Blackstone Valley Vocational Regional School District for a special one day wine and malt only pouring license for a fundraising event. To be held on March twenty first, twenty twenty four, under MS General Laws, chapter one thirty eight subsection fourteen, to be held at sixty five Pleasant Street. In the Competition Center, Upton, Mass.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous action. Town managers' report.
I was just commenting back through Teams, Linda was asking a question on the previous item, whether or not the business was grandfathered, I indicated, yes, it was grandfathered. To encourage her, talk to Michael Antonellis and Code to sort of go over that CBA approval and also any grandfathering status. Okay, so Town Manager's Report. Biggest thing is each of you have a copy of the FY twenty five Town Manager's Budget Recommendation. Would would really like to thank a lot of our department head staff, as well as boards and committees for their help in pulling this together. You know, it not only represents sort of the the work and and goals of various departments looking out at the fiscal year starting in July first. Through June thirtieth of of next year, but, you know, it identifies with the town how we're trying to allocate resources to provide the services. At the same time, it's an initial budget, we have big things that we just don't have numbers for, but we have to start someplace and and the board is very familiar with this. You know, BBT and Men and Upton Regional School District, they're still going through their budget for process, and we won't really have numbers until early to middle of March, and at that point, then we'll start refining, finding out where they are. Yeah, and I continue to have conversations with them so that at least as we go through the next couple of weeks. We'll be able to communicate, you know, our expectations, our abilities to afford various services and hopefully. You know, I encourage them to take that into consideration, but we all have long histories with developing budgets and school demands. Sometimes we can have easy years, sometimes challenging years, you never really know until you you find out the answer. Second being item is the board in your packet, we'll go over this later on. And the meeting has the initial draft of the twenty twenty four annual town meeting warrant, thirty one articles on that, although I do do anticipate some being pulled. Actually being just held over until the fall. For some of the capital items, we're waiting on some some values, depending on where that comes out. If well, some of them may not have an impact on whether we bring it for annual versus fall, but as we go through the next month and a half. Before the board approves the warrant, we'll be able to make those decisions. Also, four of those articles are zoning related, and we will be holding public hearings and ultimate. Result of that, when they stay on warrant, will also be part of that public hearing process. Other projects that are being worked on out of Town Manager's office, we have a number of contracts and procurement projects underway. Finalizing technical assistance grant, sorry, technical assistance contract with CM RPC for technical assistance in support of our website. Both Maureen and Laura were at MMA bumped into a employee of CM RPC who actually helped the town of Plymouth. who actually helped the town of Plymouth, uh, do their website and Plymouth actually had, uh, won an award for the website for their class community. Um, so, uh, MMA as well subsequently, um, I had meetings and meetings with staff along with CM RPC, uh, employee. Uh, and have a draft contract, uh, that we're just going over file details for them to do, uh, some technical assistance, do some work and then also provide some, uh, training materials so that we can, uh, do that ourselves. Uh, also tomorrow, uh, we have a tour of town hall and the community center uh, for a cleaning services procurement, um, uh, process. Uh, so, um, uh, our hope is that we'll have the ability to award a cleaning contract for both buildings by the end of the month and have the first meeting in March for the board to sign. Um, this is something that we have money in the FY twenty four budget and anticipation of engaging cleaning services, um, and you'll see it FY twenty five as well. Uh, basically with the new building that really adds like thirty three percent of the total amount of square footage we need to clean and maintain and community center compared to town hall gets a lot more use. Um, and it is a lot for, um, you know, Paul Marshand or one employee to, to manage by himself. He's been doing a great job, but it's a lot. Um, and we really need to, uh, support him by bringing on additional cleaning services.
So what we'll probably do.
They'll, so this, these cleaning services will primarily happen, uh, in the evening after hours. So cleaning the building, uh, bathrooms and all those things, you still have the need for setup. You still have the need for, uh, police and fire cleaning as well, because for a police station, you need to have someone that you can trust. You're not contracting out cleaning station. Um, so he's still got to be doing those things, um, be available for COA setup, library setup, meeting setup. So he's still running, let's still be running a lot, but he won't have to, uh, worry about that. The, as well. Uh, so we, there's plenty of work that will continue to be, be doing.
Which one would you tell me was that it's just the few?
We're, um, we're doing this as well, um, backing this out as far as contract services to see what we can do if it makes sense actually to include this, because, um, this is another building that the, this building and that get used by the public. And, um, if we're to bring in, say, a cleaning service, this building makes the most sense. The others, fire manages their own, police is the one that requires more specialty help. Um, and we have specifications that depending on where budget comes out, we mainly contract. We're looking for, for options.
Questions?
No, I think so.
Oh, um, sorry, but just continuing on also, uh, working on finalizing procure, procurement, um, specifications, documentations for, uh, the, the replacement of the fire station H V control systems. And while I don't have it on there, I wanted to mention when Alan was here, um, a sign company representative came out, met with me on Friday to get a quote for replacing the panel for, uh, our sign for our town hall. Um, because it is a metal structure, looking at two things. One, seeing about just replacing the panel itself with a digital sign. Uh, but then also looking at the need that we will have to paint and refurbish, there's something else on that sign. Um, and then by comparison, looking to see what a new structure might be, because there may be some customization that needs to be done for the existing, that maybe doesn't make it as cost efficient. So looking at getting those two quotes, I've been communicating today with that vendor on, uh, getting a, a demo as far as what are the various options so we can tell things down. Um, you know, but we want to be able to use that sign a lot more, but it is very labor intensive and especially around elections for town clerks, they're, they're busy doing work inside. And many towns, um, including some of our neighbors have recently done this, because then you can just program the messages and you can actually rotate them. So that is another, uh, procurement. Working on, on technology, uh, we're working with retrofit as well as IT staff to complete the installation of the new town server. Um, also I've met with the technology chair and town council uh, on re-kicking off the, uh, spectrum license agreement. That license actually expired in twenty twenty one. So we've been, uh, without a, uh, license for the last two years. Uh, town council, Pullman Page is also the same town council for Northbridge. Uh, Northbridge just, um, finalized a new agreement, so I reached out to, uh, that attorney. We had a call, we're preparing a very similar agreement. It will involve coming back and from the board's agreement, it's something that we want to try to get taken care of in the next couple of months, but then at least we can, uh, have our, our cable license backup running. Uh, and then, uh, also we're setting up meetings with Spectrum again, now that we have the fiber network in place. Um, each building has its own account, has its own fee, various fees. Uh, the, the fiber network allows us to basically identify two pipes to come in and we can use, it was designed so that town hall is basically, um, a hub and the other buildings are, are short bespoke. So we can share one pipe coming in and having redundant, uh, fee should access be severed here at town hall. So it allows us to not only increase our network capacity, but also, um, hopefully we can save the town some money by consolidating, so we don't have six different bills for handing that service that are out there. Uh, for the town clerk, uh, early voting is starting February twenty fourth for the March fifth primary. Also, as, uh, the board may know, nomination papers for local elected offices are now available. They must be turned in by March nineteenth. The Elder Social Services Department, uh, is working with the AARP Foundation to provide free tax preparation uh, for low to moderate income, uh, residents. Uh, we've made the former senior center available for them to use, uh, for the next, um, four weeks, uh, for tax preparation services. Um, you know, contact the ESS department for more information. Uh, coming up on February sixteenth, the men is up, uh, Mets Club is going to be hosting a dinner. Uh, that's open to the community with food from Christianos out of Oakdale, uh, Police Department. Um, uh, tomorrow, there's going to be a word ceremony for their accreditation. Uh, uh, so that's something that requires a lot of work and also represents the hard work, the department to be stringent standards and have policies in place. So congratulations to Chief Bradley and his crew and, uh, some of us are going to be going out there tomorrow. Uh, for recreation, the twenty twenty four kids that please play, uh, season has kicked off. Um, residents can start submitting applications for program signup, but also for, uh, people that want to seek employment. Um, the employment application is now available online for people to sign up. Um, the rec department is also working at expanding programs and working with, uh, businesses and our adjacent towns for, uh, providing more options, uh, for, uh, through the up and recreation department. Uh, for finances, excise tax will be sent out on February twenty third. Um, uh, treasurer's office is also looking at, uh, we're always looking to improve efficiencies and specifically and payroll and time sheet management. We have existing rule software that has on it that we're, uh, leveraging to use to try to make things simpler. Uh, the assessors are also busy with abatement applications and this month they're going to be visiting uh, seventy four, uh, properties who filed applications, so a busy month for them. Uh, code is, uh, as, as typical, they are busy and with planning board continue to have public hearings on lights and one speech. Um, I already mentioned about planning, we're submitting for zoning articles. Uh, and, uh, we did, uh, get responses for selecting a consultant for the MBTA Communities Technical Assistance Grant. And, uh, Michael, our director of land use and special services anticipates having, uh, consultant on board in the next couple of weeks to start that work. Uh, he also is working with town council on the RFP to release the first four of the resties which was authorized that section. Yeah. Uh, DPW, people will see them around town, uh, fixing and filling potholes, uh, as well as, uh, through the recent storms, there's been a lot of roadside debris, branches, trees that just put aside, so we're picking all those up. Um, and, uh, Dennis DPW Director is working with his engineers, uh, as well as town council, uh, for Grove Street and Milford Road Takings, uh, preparing those documents as well as with engineers for water tank, uh, for the water tank and inflow infiltration projects. Conservationist meeting on the Grove Street Bridge as well as Governor's Landing Sewer and Infrastructure Project. This was funded through, uh, money through the state. Um, and is also, uh, has authorized an, uh, appraisal of land adjacent to Lake Wildwood, um, that the town was approached to see if we'd be interested in acquiring that. It also is immediately adjacent to the railroad and is both within town of Updene and town of Brackton. So we're working, uh, together on that. Uh, a, uh, mandatory, um, harassment training for town employees has been scheduled, uh, two sessions. Um, employees will be able to choose between a March nineteenth and a March twenty first session. Um, and then lastly, the Updene forty B, that continued public hearing is Wednesday, February twenty first at the community center. Topics for discussion will be, uh, traffic and civil engineering.
Okay, any questions?
Um, this may be come up later if we get to it, but the, um, I know the warrants closed, I bumped into someone today from one of the committees that was talking about maybe having to or wanting, but there was something that was left off. Um, in article, maybe on the five G stuff, is that right, you know? Yes, yes, it was, was it? So, obviously, um, so the board is, um, until we basically finalize the, the board does have the ability to open the warrant to receive, um, an article and then, and insert it into. Um, so, uh, I just.
You can open and close at the same moment.
Correct, absolutely, yeah. Okay.
Okay. Moving on. We have, um, public comments, if there are any. Linda? We're still not getting.
Yeah.
Is it on her end or I?
Linda, can you try, can you try, can you try, can you try?
Not on I.
I don't think so.
She's not muted or anything, right?
Um. Team, see if she wrote anything into chat. She hasn't added anything into chat.
She took the hand down. Um.
I, she asked if she could, if I could read it out of chat. Um. Anyone else that wants to make public comment?
Well, is it just would Linda or is it whatever?
Hey, I, I know it's not my, I'm going to speak, but I'm just, uh, testing whether it's working or not. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so I guess it's on her end.
Excellent.
It's got to be.
So being easier for Linda, I have my business cell phone, my number's everywhere. If she could call it and I could put it on speaker.
That's, that's.
Is that easier than typing?
She just texted for not waiting, so.
Okay, well, um, Linda, if you can hear us, if you want to call seven, seven, four, eight, zero, four, one, six, eight, zero, I'll put you on speaker, I have my business phone. She sent anything?
Um. Uh, she said you are being too accommodated and I just wanted to say, oh, what a great job you are, are ultimately. Really excited about the warrant.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We tried very hard to be accommodated.
Yes.
All right, next is a resignation of a person from the Town Managers Act Review Committee. Uh, Mr. Brennan has resigned due to conflicting meetings, times.
Move that, so sorry.
No, go ahead.
And move that the board of selectmen vote to accept the resignation of John Brennan from the Town Manager Act Review Committee with regrets.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your time, John. Next is the appointment to the Town Managers Act Review Committee. Joe Disutter has put in an application.
Yeah.
Is CR up here or?
No, I don't see.
We filed the application. Anybody have any questions that? Has he talked to you at all, Joe?
No. I believe he's just talked, talked to the chair. I move that the board of selectmen vote to appoint Philip Disutter to the Town Manager Act Review Committee.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous action. And then we have an appointment to the EDC Economic Development Committee. Julie Jankas, um.
I don't see her. I don't see her here, but I know that she, um, joined the, the recent assay, uh, residents or joined the recent, um, EDC meeting from last week and participated. So, um, EDC is, is aware of the application and, um, uh, while there was no vote taken, I know that they were supportive of bringing someone on with her experience.
Okay. We have a motion.
I move that the board of selectmen vote to appoint Julie Jankas to the Economic Development Committee.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous action. Uh, next we have an amendment to charge and membership of the committee is Mike Panko. Yeah.
Um, I am here, can you see me in here?
Yes.
Great, well, um, I'm here representing Lakes and Ponds Committee. Um, Gary, um, Strick hat's the chair, can't be here tonight. So I'll try to answer. Gary Strickhats, the Chair, can't be here tonight, so I'll try to answer any questions. What the committee is asking of the select board is that the the structure of the committee and the committee mission be changed. The original structure of the committee had appointments of individuals to represent the Recreation Commission and the Board of Health. And that really hasn't worked out too well, the Board of Health never did appoint anyone to serve on the Lakes and Ponds Committee. And the RecCom did, but that person resigned and there's not another person who stepped up to represent the RecCom. So what we're suggesting we do is just change the the description of the committee to make, to eliminate those two positions, the Board of, the Board of Health and RecCom positions and make those two positions just general, open to the general public. You know, people who the select board would appoint. And we do have some, some individuals in mind who would like to become members of the committee. We also sadly had, had one of our committee members passed away last fall, so we we have potentially three openings on the committee. The Board of Health, former Board of Health position, perhaps the former RecCom position and the position of Mr. Bergman. The other change that we'd like you to consider is basically expanding the scope of the committee a bit to Lakes, Ponds and Streams. It would allow the committee to look at the health of streams in town, especially those that flow into our ponds. It seems to, seems to make sense because the health of ponds many times is influenced by the stream flow that's coming into them. So with that, if they, if they have questions, please, please ask. Also, I see Bill Taylor is on, I'm not sure if he had anything he wanted to say about this, he's, Bill is the DPW representative from the, on the Lakes and Ponds Committee. But I can try to answer any questions. If there are any.
Bill, looks like you want to say something?
No, I was just preparing myself in the event that I got asked a question or had something to offer. Hi, Mike described it very well.
Okay.
I'm asking for.
Good. Any questions in the board?
I, I'm a strong proponent of people not being made to go on committees, but have people that really want to be on committees, and I believe that's what's happening here.
Thanks.
Love it.
Love it. I'll take the motion. I know there's a couple of applications here, but that wasn't on your agenda.
That's the next one.
That's the next one, okay.
Move that the Board vote to approve the amendment to the charge of the Lakes and Ponds Committee as proposed.
I second. All those in favor?
Aye.
A unanimous action. And then I see the appointments and they were Laurie Woden and David Connors.
I did just today receive, and I, I'm sorry, I have it downstairs on my desk, I meant to bring it up. There was another applicant, he was, I believe back when this was first brought before the board in 2022. Mike, there was another applicant, can you reiterate that name?
That's correct, there, there were a couple of other applicants, one of them was Charlie Peterson, who some of you might remember the town did once have an aquatic weed control committee and Charlie was the Chair of that committee for, for many years. I believe he lives on Pratt Pond and he would be interested in, in joining this committee. He did submit an application year or two ago, when the committee was first formed, but he didn't quite have a chance yet to get an application for this, this round of appointments, but we know he's interested, he's attended at least one of our meetings and he's interested in becoming involved again.
So that the application that he got?
Yes, so I'm just putting it up, up there, this is really small, but he, he resubmitted the application that came in and, and 2022, at least he dropped it off again. On a hard copy. He lives on Pratt Pond.
Okay. We ready?
Yeah.
Okay, I move that the Board vote to approve to appoint David Conner, Connors, Laurie Woden and Charlotte Peterson to the Lakes and Ponds Committee, Lakes, Ponds and Streams as approved by the Board under 7A for the remainder of the one-year term expiring June 30th, 2024.
Second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous action. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you all, thanks very much.
Thank you very much. And for the board as a reminder, Lakes and Ponds is one of those committees that then may reappoint annually and sort of at the slate, so we'll have these people to the list of people that then ask for reappointment, so that we can bring them all together rather than worrying about split appointments.
My first time. Okay, we have the road race application, the 5K road race, this is done every year also.
Correct.
And Chief is approved.
Yes.
Oh.
Oh.
It didn't sound good.
It's not, but thanks for having me anyway.
This is the regular yearly race, correct?
Correct, yep. I, I join you guys every, every winter for our annual 15K road race run out of the Nipmuck, Nipmuck facility. We have very good relationships with all the involved, including the Upton PD, so yeah, I've already been in touch with them and we're on their calendar and Nipmucks as well and BBT, so a very similar logistical race that we run every year, we're not changing anything this year, so.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
No questions coming?
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the road race application submitted by Tri Valley Front Runners for a race to be held on Saturday, March 30th, 2024 at 10:00 AM.
I second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Have we changed this select board yet?
Once we hear from the AG's office, everything's approved.
Probably lost it. I was wondering since it says select board, I was waiting.
I kind of went back and thought, I'm like, you know what, I'm going to wait till it's official, I know what it says on the paper.
Yeah, it just written on the top of the paper, select board with a question mark.
Yeah.
Discussion of Board of Selectmen, oh no, not that, yeah. Of the priorities for 2024.
Did we all do our homework?
No.
No.
I did.
Well.
Because there's always one in the crowd.
Why we need you?
Partially.
Well, I, I picked out the things I thought were important.
Which?
Which I, we've approved the sand for Kiwanis, I would love to import some swans, kidnap them out of Wildwood, I don't know, get them down there. I, I know the aid oiling, turning is supposedly working, if this can help speed up the process, I would be ecstatic.
You're going to have to, you're going to leave them in the mess and hatch them, or you're going to have somebody take them home and catch them.
I have no idea, I don't know how swans are
They're professionals.
I don't know, I think they're professionals, but have you, has anybody noticed there's a couple in Wildwood?
Yes.
And I think they're beautiful, but if they keep
The geese away.
The winged rats away and I don't have to step in it when I'm down at the cemetery, I would be ecstatic. I'm sorry for all those who love Canadian
So happy
Birds.
To have a partner in crime on this, Laura.
It's disgusting, as
I am supportive of swans.
I love swans, yes, they get big enough too.
They do.
And they get nasty.
Exactly.
Yes.
Perfect for shooting geese away.
They eat Canadian geese, because they'll have to be big and healthy if they do. So that was nice, that was nice, I know. If it wasn't adjacent to the cemetery, I would feel different, but I find it very disgusting.
Worth reminding people that these geese are an invasive species at this
They are.
They're non-migrating geese.
Exactly, they are no migratory birds, they stay, they just propagate.
Yeah.
And they also, they have babies that stay.
Yeah, but it's also ingrained into them not to migrate, they are not a migratory bird, they evolved or devolved or however you want to say it.
They slide over the path, head itself and coming back.
Oh, I don't know, I think they go from Maple Lab to like Prep Pond.
Well, that could be part of the Eupolai problem too.
I'm sure it is.
A hundred percent.
So my, my other, in going through things, I would, it, I know we've discussed a second COA minivan. Even though I'm likely with the price of gas, I think that would be something I'd like to look into.
Did you get, get a chance to price them out? No?
I've only seen basically like prices through combines the state, the state contracts.
Yeah.
Which depending on what we get, you know, you're, you're looking at anywhere from 40 to 90 if you get one of like the Chrysler minivans that also then has the back handicap lift.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I, I think that in the long run, I think that would make sense versus taking one person to a doctor's appointment in a 12-passenger van.
Right.
Yeah, and the wear and tear, I think both vehicles would last longer. And then the third one would be the pavement management, you know, Dennis has done with Oak for many years. This winter has been incredibly brutal with the amount of water we've had. And I really think everyone in town deserves to have decent roads to drive and walk on. Those are my three, those are my, I picked my three big ones and those were those.
Love it.
Everything else seemed to be under control with the, the list.
Yeah, they're ongoing, yeah. The gravel lot on Grove Street.
I'm checking inbox to see if we got any, if there made any decisions on the expression of interest on where that falls. So that, from, from staff's perspective, that is also a, a high one. Anything that's dealing with sort of the up and center, we internally view as high. So everything from preparing a lease agreement for Restine to painting, to doing the environmental assessment, all these things are so related. They're all, all high, so, you know, some of the, the whole problem with lists like this is like, well, that's two of that one is. But we, we only have so much bandwidth to be able to accommodate so many, so many projects and we don't set ourselves up for defeat. But if I was to sort of comment on a ranking system, those ones that are specifically here in the center things we're really focused on. There are, and, and this came in as a, as a comment as far as Linda just asked, well, what about the old senior center? That in some ways in my mind is sort of like, after we get through the winter, that's also something we need to, to figure out. But that's where some things that happen here, we may need that in reserve, like if we actually did something with Restine that was bigger, we may need to move museum and cable, so so many of these things are just not, well, maybe except for the geese, I mean, sorry, the swans. That's a one and done, it doesn't impact anything else, maybe it impacts pretty conceived.
I successfully.
But some of the, the other things, anything that deals with the center then really has this sort of domino effect that and I think it is one of those things, once we get one domino, some of these others like fall into place.
Exactly.
Yeah, so. And right now, like with the old, the old center, we turn down thermostat, you know, once we stop using it, it, we do have expenses as far as electric and gas, but they're really minimal and it gives us flexibility, like right now. We have so many people in Millhouse that are flowing, but also transportation challenged that it was easy to say, you know what, ARP gets set up over there. They, Millhouse as itself without the center doesn't have space to accommodate something like this, so it gives us a flexibility to do something and then I've already been talking with Tanya, we're going to have meet and greets over there using that space, introduce her to the community, so we're we're going to use, we're not like mothballing it totally, but if there are things that make sense for, for use, that's good to have it while we then figure out some of these other larger projects, which then may necessitate doing something over there, even if it's on a temporary basis.
Back to the gravel lot.
Yeah.
Have to be illuminated first, right? You know when that's going to happen?
Know that that is one of the contracts that Mike is working on as well. So that's in process, that was something that we've got some grant funding to, to cover as well as the EDC money, economic development here. So those are things that we're, we're pulling together. The lease is an easy sort of smaller thing to get that taken care of, so we can put that on the street and then find a local business that might be willing to go into that space and then be sort of free up some of the other man hours. And a couple of months, we're probably going to be looking at the 40B decision anyways, and that's going to free up time and code as well.
Brett? You got any particulars?
Oh no, this started off with my fun little email, so I'm, I'm good, this is, this is as much as I can process at one time, so. But I agree with what everybody's saying, it's a great list, I like having a list, I think it helps us all to remind ourselves that we haven't forgotten about these things, just because we don't talk about them doesn't mean they're not happening or moving or evolving.
Right, you've got a lot to defend it.
Yeah. Right, and that's where this was on on my list to get done for internal tracking as well, so you're sort of kicking that off, it allows, so one of the things I ended up doing, asking where are we on this and on this, I provide to me apartment, yeah, then it's like, okay, where were we from these things? And this is then something that can be updated monthly, that just share out as far as here's the latest on what's going on. So it, so it is also a vehicle to relay that information to the board, but then also the community, so what I would like to do is sort of rub this into something that is a little bit more digestible, so that the community can see, okay, here are things that are on the town's plate. You know, what was the last real action item on that, so that if someone says, well, you know, where are we? Can we put it on the website? Yeah.
The new one?
Yes.
We're getting user friendly.
We're getting help.
I tried to get into the calendar. It just took me back to the main page.
You talked to Alex and Alex won an award and it was very, very user friendly and he agreed ours was atrocious, but he knew how to fix it, so therefore I'm psyched.
Well, he did say he saw. Did we just redo our?
Yes, he did say he saw though.
So there we go, so we
But we're not far behind.
So we did, but it's, it's really about optimization. There are some things that I got, I got, I, I got asked to provide feedback, like how would you rate us? And I think it's like zero, one, just the experience just was not good, and when I talked to them, one of, one of the, the comments was they blew through the training and the training wasn't really appropriate and it wasn't reflective that we're a small town, but the way that they really set things up is when you have, say, a permanent staff that is that is like an IT person to then really shepherd everything. When we're distributed and trying to deal with things department by department, each person is interpreting the training differently and then applying it differently. So we got a lot of inconsistencies. So then we as a team had to back up, redo some things, rock, have clean up to try to sort of be that one to spearhead. Um, but what we needed, needed is someone like this, this Alex that works for Central Mass Regional Planning. He's going to come in, do an assessment, identify what needs to be corrected, make some of those changes. And he identified things that so that you don't have to click three times to get the agenda. Say, oh no, you can do this. And you set it up as a template and just as easy as.
Does Alex, do you know that our objective is to have the best website in the state?
Um, yes, because we need to, if, if he helped Plymouth get there for the populations over twenty thousand, then we need to be on for the under ten thousand.
We expect to win an award next year.
That's.
And no pressure on Alex.
That's what I'm talking about. You have our full support to win the award.
I play the wage.
Well, it's also hard for your citizens to, to get in.
No, eh.
I mean, if it's taking us thirty minutes to find something, the average person has snored at the computer wishing it had ears and quit.
Yeah.
You know?
Yes. Oh, hey, any other discussions?
All of that. Thank you.
Right.
So especially, given this is a living document, so as we undertake things, it's going to be added. So don't and I'm shooting it off when I say this, um, don't be shy to say, hey, we need to add this to the list.
Yeah.
Uh, cause I know this could end up being a two hundred item list at some point.
Uh huh.
Um, but there are, there are some like administrative things on this that, that aren't, that still project priorities, um, of, of mine. Um, but I think, uh, this really highlights the, the, the really, um, high profile, high impact projects that are community force.
They're ones that stick out.
Yeah.
Okay. Next we have the review of the draft annual town meeting warrant and the article meeting. Well, we're gonna transfer money into the stabilization fund this year or will we have?
We have.
Ten percent, I thought.
So, um, I don't know if you want to sort of just go one by, by one, um, just sort of looking through if, if you have any questions. Um, uh, many of these are standard and then when we get to some of the dollar amounts like for water enterprise and wastewater, um, I'm just waiting for Kenny to give me those final dollar figures.
Um, as far as they have retained earnings?
Uh, yes, but then also wages, uh, expenses on all those things.
Okay.
Um, so one of the things, so the first five are, are pretty much bulletproof. Uh, the next one, Article Six, which is revolving spending limits. I am, uh, requesting from town meeting authorization to add a revolving fund. And that would be a up in community center revolving funds. The idea is that as we get some of our, um, if people rent out and rent out the facility, we'd like to be able to follow that back in for either, uh, for dealing with, right, for dealing with costs that may be, or as far as cleaning, um, services.
Electric.
Right. Exactly. Because someone rents it out on, on, on Saturday or I'm sorry, on Sunday when the building is typically closed. You know, we are, we are subsidizing that through our facilities budget because we don't differentiate. Um, uh, who, we don't, we don't differentiate in our electric bill whether someone was there on Sunday. We do have some public groups like the, um, Voice Scouts and Girl Scouts that we don't charge for. This is really when we defined uh, the policy for the community center. We did identify groups that, you know, we would charge it fee for. At least it's just something.
Now, was any, anybody there from town when these groups rent out?
Yes. Um, uh, typically a janitor is there. If, um, if we have a private event, we do require a janitor be there. Um, when it's not open for state library being open. So.
Great.
Um, so then again, Article Seven is, is rather standard. Article Eight and Article Nine. Um, and I figured on this, some of this would be waiting for when we had some of our meetings with FinCom or we're asking for FinCom to, um, address this. Um, uh, we've hit the minimum ten percent. So according to our financial policy, we don't need to contribute additional funds to our stabilization because we've exceeded the minimum of ten percent. It doesn't mean we can't be at twelve percent. Um, so this is really a financial decision. Do we want to include this? Or do we want to say, take that stabilization and put it towards capital stabilization, which then is the subsequent article. So some of these are, when we start to have discussions on the articles, we're gonna be looking for feedback as far as best financial policy. Knowing.
Six hundred thousand. I was gonna say maybe the hundred and sixty could go to the whole construction.
Yeah, it, it could. Um, so that's where it's some of those, those decisions and especially once we get to the school budgets.
Yeah.
Um, we may decide, okay, well, maybe this is something easy that then we can accommodate without making other revisions.
Have they given any kind of a percentage increase other than that some?
They're not really saying, um, I know from talking to men and often, I think they are trying to live within what we're identifying. Um, uh, Kenny and I are trying to be reasonable by giving a three percent increase, not trying to stick it to him saying, well, you know, we're undercutting you at two, three percent is reasonable. Um, uh, given the fact that it's three percent on top of what last year at annual town meeting approved. I remember in the fall they decreased. So we're not going three percent off of the decreased amount. So really it's, it's three point three percent increase. So we're trying to be reasonable and my read from meetings was that they're gonna try to make it work. Um, next week they have a, a budget subcommittee. So we'll get a little bit, little bit more, uh, understanding. DVT is a little bit more close to the chest at this point and that tracks with how things were last year, that it wasn't until later February that they started sort of saying, here's where we think things are going to be. Because it also depends on their acceptance rate. We could see a significant jump if we get more students, even though if, if enrollment was the same, maybe we don't see much of a jump. But if all of a sudden we get two, three students, yeah, then we're dealing with a different, you know, impact. So.
Okay.
Um, so, re, um, last year we put two hundred for capital stabilization. I bumped it up to three. Depending on what we were doing with Article, uh, eight with the regular stabilization, but also we have some significant projects with DPW, uh, with some of our rec. So in talking with Kenny, we're either rolling over free, free cash or we're separating it out. And that's where we're posting to sort of pop up the capital stabilization because we know we have a DPW facility. It may need some additional assistance with, um, uh, finalized engineering and design and an OPM. So, um, our thought is to have, have this on the warrant, um, as an article. OPM is the standard. I'm sorry, OPEB, that's the standard hundred thousand that we've been doing.
What do we have in that account?
Oh, shoot. Kenny just reviewed with us the, um, uh, at our last meeting.
I don't know.
Yeah, I remember what he said. I do too.
Um, so Article eleven is standard and then Article twelve is identifying sort of re uh, getting back to where Dennis would like to see, um, our road construction. This is relying on a hundred out of, um, uh, the general fund and then five hundred out of free cash. So, um, it's not all coming out of, uh, general funds. Um, uh, and I think I, I mentioned that in the previous meeting as well. This is something that, again, depending on what we wanted to do with stabilization, if we wanted to throw it at this to then reduce the amount, um, that was taken out of, uh, free cash, we would be.
Well, free cash should be, if we want this to be a budget number year.
That's, that's the, the significant challenge because, um, with all the, the requests, uh, the initial budget was five hundred and twenty four thousand dollars in the red. Um, and that was having six hundred coming right from, uh, general fund. Uh, so twenty four, four thousand, that was, uh, pretty straightforward as far as to address that. Um, and then I had to cut a little bit more because then, um, Dennis and Bill started running because now we have six months worth of utility bills for the community center. We have a better understanding as far as projected cost. We need to sort of add back in eighteen thousand for gas utilities. So cut and then add it back in. This is, this is Kenny and, and my initial proposal that, um, we're funding it this way because to, to come up with five hundred thousand, we're, we're then impacting services and personnel.
Is there a strategy that's, and, and maybe this is sort of happening by default where we know that our vision or our intent, because we talked about it, so I don't know where I put it words in here.
Yeah.
That we want to fund, that this, we want to fund roads in this local relative consistency, whether it's four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, six hundred thousand. A number of that until we sort of reach a steady state of maintenance. Obviously to do that all at once is tough. Can we try to like get a hundred thousand in this year into the operating budget, get a hundred thousand in next year? So like in five years, it's built in and we're sort of like that taking chunks of it each year or is that crazy?
What does he have right now? Two, is it two hundred and some or one hundred?
Um, so the total amount, and I don't have that immediately off the top of my head because Dennis has also not spent some of his road money waiting for press. So, um, uh, and we're going to be getting about nine hundred thousand dollars this coming year in our road money, uh, chapter ninety. Uh, part of that is part of a one-time increase that the governor has signed for additional tracking ninety funds. That gives us about two hundred thousand more than what our typical calculation would be. Um, so that sort of changes the math. So he'll have almost a million dollars worth of new funds, uh, for, for roadway and then throwing on this. It's, it's really well off. But your point as far as, um, we know annually we're getting seven hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars and annually, that's quite our increase in revenue. And if we say, you know what, we want annually a hundred thousand of whatever, um, new revenue to go towards roads, then that's a policy, financial policy decision that we can use to be. Um, challenge always ends up being we don't know. And, and looking at past budget years, we know that regardless of what came out of the recommendation, we're then always reacting to the, to the schools and that that can upend things. Um, and I don't think it's, it's not happening this fiscal year. But I think next year, everything is, uh, looking towards some sort of larger operational override with the schools. And that's where I think having this discussion and thinking about sustainability, I think it's been kind of terribly important for having that conversation, not only with any of myself, Dennis, but also the finance committee because, um, you know, some towns approach this by saying, we're having strict debt exclusion. Uh, we're funding a million dollars worth of work, road work over the next three years and it's dedicated. Um, uh, when I worked for Town and Grafton, they did that. Uh, Northridge tried to do that. It didn't pass there. Many towns try to do that as a way of taking that decision and policy off the table and say, well, it's already, the residents wanting to devote this money. This is specifically roads. We can't use it for anything else. That's also an option, but the inconsistency in funding it is what gets towns into problems where some of our, our roads are in tough shape and Pleasant is going to be a multi-million dollar project. Uh.
So I think we're not trying to dictate policy. I think we're suggesting, you know what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
The same conversation last year. So I want to come up with a better approach so that we're not having the same conversation next year.
So, did you say he was getting two hundred thousand more in chapter nine? Is that a one-time?
That's a one-time.
So for this year, could we reduce the five hundred by the two hundred he's getting in chapter ninety and take the one sixty that's in? We don't have to put in stabilization and give that to him too?
Yeah.
That where you're not taking that much from free cash.
Yeah. And, and that's where, you know, there's, there's one as far as consensus of the board as far as a sort of giving me direction. Uh, but that these are also policy discussions.
Yeah.
You know, with, uh.
I didn't.
I.
All out of free cash.
I would love to see a plan that gets us to funding roads annually without having to do this every. So maybe a proposal for what that would look like over the next five years or whatever, right? Like whatever it is. So, so the short answer is yes, I totally agree with you, that we can make those changes for this warrant. Also, I want to solve the systemic problem.
Well, the chapter nine, I have a problem with the chapter nine and the way they do it anyways is, um, and I forget.
We're not gonna solve that.
No, I know, but I forget the name of the town, but most of the land's underwater. They get millions.
Is there?
They don't put roadways underwater, do they, Keith?
Oh, true.
They do it.
Ocean, I would assume.
I looked it up and I'm trying to figure out where all the roads are. It's all water. Yeah. Oh, underground town. What is, what is the Chesapeake Bay town? All right. We solved that problem, huh?
I think we got it.
We did. See, wasn't that easy, Joe?
Yeah. Um, so other, other, you know, like the CPC articles are really straightforward. We didn't have, we already took care of like those requests from Lincoln. The other years as far as studies, um, the only one that's, that, um, draw your attention to, there's two of them. Um, is acquisition for, uh, land adjacent to Lake Wildwood. Um, this is, um, forty seven acres, some of which is also, some of the land, forty seven acres does not include some of the land that's, that is solely within Grafton. Uh, we're doing an appraisal, uh, but this is sort of a placeholder because, uh, you're dealing with an estate and you don't know whether or not all members of the estate will end up supporting what, you know, the town would see reasonable. So.
And I know why I sell houses that are in estates. It's not just the members, it's the judge. The court has to approve it as well. So I don't know if that's the case here as well.
That I haven't heard, um, but I've heard that there's difference of tennis between siblings and we'll see where that comes out. This may end up not being.
Was it just to do the legal work? Is that, was the price on it at the time we first talked about it?
No, that's conservation authorized, um, use of some of their, uh, funds to, uh, fund an appraisal. Um, there wasn't, uh, appraisal on the value of property. So, uh.
It's all landlocked, okay?
It is landlocked, although there is a right of way across the railroad to, um, uh, the, the dairy, uh, way subdivision and out in between two homes. So the property owners had. So the property owners had an access, uh, right of way to come through onto dairy.
I think there, this is, this is Bill, if I could interrupt us for a second, I think there's some question about whether or not the right of way extends over the railroad.
Right.
So those are all things that.
Oh, so this isn't a, this isn't a done deal yet.
No, 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 without it being on as placeholder, if all some things pulled together, we wouldn't have the option unless we pre-order the warrant. Um, and then the next one.
Oh, Article Thirteen, uh, de, snow and ice deficit, does Dennis have any kind of thoughts on where he's at with that?
Uh, the amount we have remaining in the budget is ninety thousand. Um, the next meeting Dennis is gonna come to sort of give us his annual snow and ice update report on where we are.
The ground town didn't see a shadow.
No, I think he's betting that it's gonna be in early spring, but.
It's gonna be fifty-five on Saturday, yeah, I'll take it every day.
Wasn't it like fifty, fifties or something the day before, uh?
It's almost.
Set up a sort of seventy-eight.
Yeah, probably, which, some, it was around the sign of the year, so hush, hush.
Um, uh, and then eighteen was some of my twelve thousand, five hundred for, uh, some. The survey engineering work they tossed for, uh, land off Mechanic Street. This is sort of like back acreage off of land that fronts on Mechanic Street. Uh, that's also a noticeable article and then, uh, Bill, uh, has been working on that. It's more than something people with land stewardship. We have funding for, for this gap reconstruction, um, this is, you know, the, the whole project for reconstruction is. Um, about one point eight billion, um, and, um, we just need, just need. Five hundred thousand dollars to bring it up to finish line, uh, this is through, um. Accumulated funds that Dennis has been holding off because this is such a significant project. Uh, then we have a couple, uh, vehicles that, that the DPW director is looking at replacing. Uh, one ton of highway, a new, uh, water sewer department, uh, truck that would be paid through retained earnings. Um, uh. A second lease, uh, department vehicle, uh. The next three items are some of those that may fall until the fall town meeting. Uh, cause we're working on getting estimates and scopes of work, um, the cell, police station cell, log plumbing repair. Fire station vehicle bay dragons repair and engine refurbishment, um, those are things that. Uh, are on the, the capital plan, uh, but we need additional details to identify exactly the scope of work and refurbishment. Um, uh, the estimates are coming in higher than what was on the capital plan. Uh, so we're just, we're trying to pull together those, uh, scopes of work and dollar amounts for that. Uh, Chief Bradley is putting in a request for replacing two of the three message boards. Uh, Dennis is going to be replacing the third, uh, using water and sewer or his proposals to use water and sewer. Uh, retained earnings. Then we have our, uh, beach stand replenishment. A standard article for Board of Assessor Recertification. Uh, the treasurer collectors office have requested, uh, Article Twenty-nine, which is, um, authorization for raising demand fees. And would allow for the, uh, for the, um. Department and then the board to set what that is. Consistent with Mass General Law.
What's the one that I mentioned, uh?
Not more than thirty. And more.
Acceptance of the Zalea Lane again?
Yes, again, so we will have, yes, we will have to, um, schedule a layup hearing, uh, for this with the planning board, with the board of selectmen. Uh, and we have the fine, uh, Dennis is working with the property owner. Who previously had not rented approval, um, because there was an easement that was not withheld by the developer. And so the property transferred without retaining that easement, so, uh, we're working on getting final sign offs from the property owner. So we can actually accept the road.
Oh, yeah, let's see, check the road, I mean, I think it's almost five years that it's, isn't it? Five, actually, five years?
It's probably.
Yeah, I think a little. That's when they start tier rating and the town doesn't need another vote.
Exactly. And then we get into our zoning articles and sorry, I misspoke, it's thirty-four, thirty-one, um, still in denial, I think. Uh.
Right.
Uh, so, but again, these need to go through public hearing, three of them, two of them are pretty straightforward. Um, and, uh, the inclusionary zoning is one of those that, um, there was a recent court case that. Uh, town council is now working with the planning board to see about changing because. The special permit process for, um, inclusionary zoning units was what was, um, deemed, um. Uh, not legal in a court case, so they're looking at those, um, the. The facts written on that case to see if that really is something that then we need to amend or whether or not there's something else unique that. Does not invalidate our existing proposed language. Many towns do have special permit provisions for inclusionary, for enforcing, um, inclusionary zoning provisions. Um, but some towns have it by right as well, um, and it's a requirement through other provisions of the zoning law. So this could have an impact, um, but we don't know yet and that's something town council is working on. And then, uh, the overlay for solar, this is specifically gonna be dealing with a, a, uh, single property. Uh, town council has, uh, reviewed this and is of the opinion that it does not trigger the way that is worded. It does not trigger spot zoning, um, but I think, um, you know, once we have the public hearing and we get the public comment. We'll sort of know, uh, if this is viewed more positively by, um, some of the, uh, residents as well as maybe town meeting attendees. Uh, concerns about then solar facilities going all over now. So that's, uh. Our warrant, warrant. Good work.
When we have an assembly.
So that is something that's, um, uh. Through the, the chair communicating with Fincom if you want to schedule, um.
I will speak if nobody minds with the chair of Fincom. Still interested.
Little bit of heads up, fireworks, right to weekends, so, little bit of planning on my part. Well, you have to, yeah, I can adjust my schedule.
I can't promise I'm gonna participate, but it's certainly worth acquiring.
Yeah, I think we should.
All right. We'll leave that. I have the budget recommendations, yeah, we're gonna go through the wall.
So, I mean. So at least we talked a little bit about one component, but for the most part, you're, you're looking at, um. Essentially a global service budget, the only real increases are things the board knows about as far as separating out. Um, personnel with the community office and then a, um, uh, ten hour part-time position. It's requested through, uh, the library, uh, for the popularity of their, their credit programs. They see the demand and they're, they're looking for essentially a ten hour position, uh, to allow for that to happen. Everything else ends up being, you know, almost ten percent increase in health insurance, twelve percent for retirement. Um, property insurance at about ten percent, those sort of typical large items we see year on year. Out that unfortunately exceed. You know? Um, and, and then, you know, again, it's, it's an initial budget. We'll get a better idea once, um, once schools start messaging what they're looking at, uh, but. Um, uh, the board has hard copies, I let Fincom know if they want hard copies, we have. About five printed off downstairs if any of them wants it, um, it's on the town's website of news and announcement as well as. A, a new dedicated page on town manager budget recommendation, so it also has the historic ones. Um, so encourage, uh, not only board members, and it was sent out to all the department heads as well and boards and committees. Take a look at it, um, and, um, you know, this starts the whole town meeting process. That is our rite of passage every spring.
Mm-hmm.
Against, and take the motion, you can go on to object and accept it.
I move that the select board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, Three. Back to collective bargaining, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body. And the chair so declares police and DPW collective bargaining units in Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, subsection Twenty-One. A two to conduct strategy in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, HR director, executive assistant. And to adjourn the meeting directly from executive session, I'll call them, right, Simonus?
Laura, have I, I'm gonna second it, I will second it, well, he voted first. Second the motion.
All in favor?
Brett Simonus.
Laura, have I?
Maureen, don't lie.